We always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting, and I'll lead us in this prayer at this time. Lord, just come to you today, just thank you for the many blessings of life that you give us each day, some we recognize, some we don't even know about, but Lord, we know that you're always there with us. We just thank you for the protection you provided for us during this storm. We thank you for the protection you provided for all our emergency personnel and, Lord, we just thank you for the fact that this storm came through Hart County, Georgia, and no one was injured from the storm. Lord, we just pray for those that are in the pathway in Florida. Lord, just pray that you'd be with those folks and help all the emergency personnel, give them the strength and the resources they need to help provide safety there for that community, those communities. And Lord, we just come to you, just thanking you for our, our own emergency personnel here in Hart County, our law enforcement, sheriff's office, their EMS, our fire department, and Lord, we just pray for your protection upon these. Lord, just pray that you'd be with us during this meeting tonight and help us to always look to you for guidance and wisdom, in thy name we pray. Amen. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we call to order the October 8, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. And first of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or you're on HTC Channel 3 or on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners, we welcome all of you. First of all, we need to approve the agenda. Is any additions or?
No, I don't have any changes.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o' vote. All right, we'll move on down to approve the minutes of the previous meetings. First one's a regular meeting, 9/24/2024. Have a motion to approve those as printed.
I got a clarification.
Okay.
Under Commissioners Reports.
Okay.
Fourth paragraph, this is Commissioner Dorsey offered to get well wishes to Commissioner Brown, echoed county administrator tail parting sentiments for citizens to prepare for the upcoming storm, stated the true way to look at millage rate was the cost to provide services per citizen using revenue sources and that Hart County's cost per citizen is still lower than the surrounding counties. Remember, I talked about that, you showed that, so I just want to make sure that's correct.
All right, with that amendment.
With that amendment, I'll make a motion approved, 9/24/24.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o' vote. All right, we'll move on to the called budget meeting, also on 9/24/2024. Any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o' vote. All right, we'll move on to remarks by anybody, guests, committees, or authorities, we have done, reports to Constitutional Officers Department heads. Mr. Kim, you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. County administrators report.
We'll catch the financial report first. Basically, this, all these are unaudited numbers, everybody keep that in mind. For September, the revenue coming in was 902,654. Expenses were 1,593,685, left a deficit of 691,031, and we still have a reserve of 2,189,197. Property tax at 25,492, which is normal for this time of year. Losses came in 368,024. EMS fees at 101,055. Vehicle tag, tag fee at 188,582. And for the year, budget-wise, spending-wise, we're about a little less than 2% under budget. And of course, the revenue is about 11% over, and if you'll see, that comes out with the two numbers on the lost and the vehicle tag fee. I'll be glad to answer any questions we have.
They still sell automobile.
Okay, any questions? No questions on that. I'm gonna hit the storm just a little bit here to, just to let people know what all goes on, well, not what all goes on, but at least a little inside of what, what started, goes on with the stuff. I guess the high point, at the highest peak of the wind, we had 70 mile an hour wind gust, sustained 35, 45 miles an hour. At, depending where you was at, nine to 10 inches of rain, we had 180 roads affected, either trees, overcap in water, whatever, we had, best I could count, a little over 180 roads. Quick counting at 250 trees on roadways, this is just on the roadways. One time, according to the websites on the power companies, we had a little over 7,500 people out of power, and we've received reports on 15 or 16 homes that suffered significant damage. And the good news is, thankfully, nobody, nobody was injured during all this stuff. And just lets you know kind of what personnel's out, and the numbers are combined, the city people, city folks and county folks, when something goes on like this, it don't matter, everybody goes. We had about 50 road personnel out in both places. We had a little, around 30 law enforcement officers out, and most of them had chainsaws, code enforcement, they was out. The fire department personnel, we had about 60 people out, all 11 stations, all 11, and that's 11, 10 county, one city station, everybody had people out. We had eight communication officers between 911, the sheriff's office, and the PD, and neighbors and family, you can't count them, and that's what counts in these things, is helping your neighbor, and that, we seen a lot of that, a lot of that. And there's been a lot of discussion about disaster declarations, what they mean, and it's kind of misleading, people see public assistance, and that's what we get declared for, A and B, and we waiting on to see a declaration under public assistance. Public assistance means government stuff, it don't mean individual, private people, it's government stuff. And in categories, like say, A, it's debris removal, we know we got that one. Protective measures is what will try to recoup our costs on all the personnel over time, stuff like that. Roads, I'm not sure, we had a couple roads warped some, I don't know we'll have enough uninsured claims for filing on it, we don't have anything on buildings. Utilities, that's where EMC comes in there. Their initial number they gave me was, was 200,000, that was early, I'm sure they higher than that now, but. In parts from recreation, we did the ramp at the, the dock at the mega ramp was destroyed, and by the way, we pulled it out of the water yesterday. I can't do anything with it till we find out about the reimbursement, but it's up at the edge of the farthest parking lot out of the water, because people were still trying to get on it, it was a danger, so we pulled it yesterday. And just about this for a note, it's, everything in a disaster is based on dollar, everything. Our minimum threshold, we have to have at least $118,000 worth of uninsured damage or cost to even qualify, so that's, that's the way it works. Every county difference is based on population. If you get to the, the individual assistance, that's where actual homeowners, business owners can apply directly to FEMA, it don't come through the local people, it comes through FEMA. And if you'll see, a lot of times, it's classified as a major disaster. Eber County and usually below so far have been declared under that. The only other thing that came in today is for small businesses or businesses. They was pulled in under Anderson's declaration for businesses. They can apply, I'll put the information out here on the table and send it to the chamber where they can send it to the business. If they had uninsured losses, they can apply through the Small Business Administration, which is a loan, it's not, it's not, there's no such animal free money out there, it's usually a loan, and it's just a better, a better interest rate, but qualifications are the same for you as they are for any loan you go to the bank and get, you still gotta meet all those qualifications. And other, that's about it, and anybody got any questions, they can give me a call, and I'd be glad to help them, try to walk them through anything, but, so that's about it. And again, if y'all want to give praise, give praise to that 130 or 40 or so and all them other people out there, that was out there, and I was here in this building, I would drive. He and mother folk was out in the wind and the rain, running chainsaws and everything else, so they deserve a huge, a huge thank you from all of us. That's all.
All right, thank you, Terrell. Speaking of the storm, yes, we, we, we have people here in our own office that needs to be thanked, we have, we have a lot to be grateful for, and, and we're thankful for the caliber of people that we have that's working for us with good attitudes and all, but I'd like to thank the road department, the fire department, EMS, E911, I mean, you know, that's where the information gets all, it gets started right there. I mean, when these folks call in and, and those phones were ringing one right after another, and I don't understand how they do this and be coordinated as they were, but they were very coordinated, and the sheriff's office, we appreciate them, maintenance shop for, you know, having our equipment, so it does run at a time that we do need it, you know, and, and also, Terrell, I mean, I know he don't, he's not one for, you know, big birthday cakes and candles and all the glamour, but, you know, this man done a great job coordinating all this, having all this in place before the storm got here, you know, and we really appreciate what he has done. I was thinking the other day, the, I'm not throwing off on the other administrator that we had, but he would not have been able to handle this as well as Terrell has, and, and this is a great asset to our community and our county here, to have Terrell in the position he's in. In the city emergency, we appreciate the coordination through those, and hats off to Hart EMC, Georgia Power, and like Terrell said, these neighbors that come out and help each other, that's what, that's one of the things that makes Hart County great, is the, the people that are willing to spend time with their neighbors and help them out in a time of need, you know, and, and I heard of stories where people were looking out for the elderly people, that's another thing, you think about it, and these, this was a time that, you know, folks that are on oxygen and those that, you know, require electrical power, and then, you know, the power goes out, I mean, those folks are in need, and, and like Terrell said, I'm just thankful that no one in Hart County was injured or we suffered any kind of great loss here in Hart County through this storm. And also, I would like to announce that December 14th, it's on a Saturday, if you have time to go down to the Sardis Family Activities Center from 12 to 2, and they're gonna have an appreciation for Sheriff Mike Cleveland and Chief Deputy Tommy Whitmire, so if you want to show your gratitude and your thankfulness for those serving as long as they have here in Hart County, I'm sure they would appreciate it. But that's all I have, and we'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't know what I could add to Chairman Sayre's report there, it was just, I found it to be truly amazing, I was out there myself, I saw all these people, there was private contractors out there working for free, you know they're not billing anybody, but just the community, it was just truly wonderful to see how the community came together. It's just, it, when it happened, I mean, it all really happened in my community right after daylight, I was standing in my garage when my big triggers started falling, but, and I think that's when the power started going on, everybody around 6 o'clock in the morning. But I just, I was like anybody else, I said, okay, well, who can we help? You know, because there's people out there, block, driveways were blocked, just everybody just came together. Terrell sending the reports, just text message after text message all day long, keeping us surprised of everything going on. We were blessed for the little bit that we got. There's people still, I think 70 some thousand people out of power in North Flainsdale, Florida's got some stuff, so I thank the Lord for how we were blessed for the little bit that we experienced, and I certainly thank him that we didn't have any fatalities in our county, that we just had power outages and trees and roads and whatever, you know, it's just certainly blessed. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I tell you, I want to echo everything that Chairman Sayre said, appreciate the way our community pulled together, our law enforcement, public safety, all our first responders, EMTs, I appreciate Georgia Power and Hart EMC getting this back up and going as quick as we can, and I just appreciate all our law enforcement, the state patrol, our game wardens, Department of Natural Resources, appreciate all them guys and everything that they do to keep our community safe, that's all I got.
District 4, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, just how fortunate we are, I mean, just the sheer thought of thinking if that storm would have been, you know, closer to Atlanta, Gwinnett area, as far as the eye, how different our landscape would look right now and how different our situation would look, but, you know, how fortunate we are to have a great administrator and first responders, EMS staff and EMA staff, I mean, you guys should be commended, and you are being commended for the job you did, just spectacular job, everybody was communicating well, getting on top of things, I know, obviously, we were fortunate to not have a disaster here in some areas, but just can't say enough about the individuals, the linemen, you know, just everyday citizens getting out there and helping their neighbor, which is what it's all about, and if, if we would, we commend Terrell Knight and our staff and our first responders, but we can't tell too much, because FEMA may come recruit you guys, and we don't want that, because obviously, they could use as much help as they can get, but, once again, you know, I like to see the, the community coming out and people helping out their neighbors. Made a trip up to North Carolina Friday with some individuals, and that's what's going on up there, is community involvement, individuals lending a hand and helping, and just seeing the destruction up there, and just giving that sense of gratitude coming back home, how good we had it. I think the biggest complaints we had was folks out of power for two hours, and, I mean, for two days, and, Lord have mercy, if that's the worst thing we can complain about, you know, how fortunate we are. But continued prayers and thoughts for those folks in North Carolina, you know, a lot of this stuff you're seeing circulate, and unfortunately, is true, some of it may be a little stretched, but they definitely need more help, and they need more individuals helping, they obviously don't need government helping them, and, yeah, we, looks like we're gonna be needing the same thing south of us again, so just hoping, pray this storm doesn't cause too much damage and we can get through this, but that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I'd like to echo those same sentiments as you, you guys did, and everybody's added something, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but all our folks who got out and helped, emergency services, citizens, kudos, job well done. And I want to go back and, and I want to commend Terrell too for his coordination. It all starts with preparation and being prepared, and that's what it's all about, that's why we train, that's why we have these simulations, that's why we do the things that we do in emergency services, so that we can be prepared when these times happen, and just kudos to everybody and thank the Lord that it wasn't any worse here than what it was. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, now I'll make a few more things I forgot to tell people. What we've done, we have, if you have storm debris, we talking about greenery debris, if you can't be building material, nothing like it, we have a place at a transfer station before you get to the scales to the right, there's no charge, if you haul it out there too, there's no charge. We have to keep up and catalog all this stuff, and on your property, if you can get it up where we can get it, pick, grab it from the road, our ride away, we'll get whatever you've got in the yard and you can get up to our road before we can get, we can't come on your property and get it, if you can get up close enough, we can get on the edge of your property, grab it, and then load it up, and that'll take place, it's gonna take weeks, folks, you put it out there, you don't need to call us and tell us it's out there, we go on road by road by road. But with the declaration stuff, we have to do it a certain way. Right now, we waiting on somebody from the state to come to be a debris manager, but bottom line, we gonna get it, it don't matter, we would love to get our rebate, get our 75% of cost back, but bottom line, we take care of ourselves, and if we don't get a dime back, we still gonna do what we gotta do. I forgot to mention that during another stuff, but that's what that's it.
That's really great, that saved a lot of money, because that's the mess everywhere out here.
Well, it is, well, like I said, if you can get it up, I mean, and a lot of people that already got contractors and doesn't, if you hire a contractor to bring it out, that'd go across the scale, we can't do it for businesses, but a private individual, we don't, we're not looking for any, any charges of them whatsoever.
Appreciate that, Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to old business adding Liberty Church Road to the no through truck list, take this as the third and final reading, have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we add, take this as the third reading to add Liberty Church Road to the no through truck ordinance.
Second. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five o' vote. All right, now we'll move on to the public hearing for fiscal year '25 budget and tax year 2024 millage rate. Need a motion to open the floor for this hearing. And then motion open the floor.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley, all in favor, it's five o' vote, so we are now officially in a hearing for our '25 budget and '24 millage rate. Anyone like to?
I'm gonna go over the, the information, and then, then we go, go through the questions We're gonna talk about the general fund budget, which, why we, we beat on it so much, that's what your millage rate is set by. If you look at it this year, it's, it's balanced revenue expenditures at 17,706,390, and there's your breakdown, a high has broken down, and I hope y'all can see this, I kept trying to get the font bigger and bigger, but the 55% of it is spent on public safety. But the fifty-five percent of it is spent on public safety. Well over half of the general fund budget goes to public safety. And of course, you'll see.
Elaborate on what you mean by public safety, because fire's not included.
Fire's not included. We'll get to that at the very end. Public safety, law enforcement, EMS, code enforcement, no, no, yeah, code enforcement, coroner's office, DA's office, it's split there between DA and the court system, but the DA's included in public safety. If you'll see the budget over the last four years, no reason, I couldn't go back over four years because that's all we got in our new computer system. But anyway, you'll see, and if you'll see that gap here, the top line's revenue, bottom line's budget. If you'll see this big gap right here, I'm going to tell you how that come about. We were given during COVID, five million dollars, a little five million dollars. You could not directly take that money and lower millage rate with it. But you had a lot of things you could spend it on. So we took everything we could possibly spend that money on as far as equipment, log cars, archiving all of our court files, all that stuff that we would have normally, we got to do anyway. We'd normally paid it out of general fund, but we used those funds. That's why you got that gap between the expenses and revenue. The expenses came somewhere else out of a different budget, so they was there, but that's where that gap come in. And that was the only way that we could figure out, we could get the best benefit for the taxpayer out of that money. A lot of you gubbs just turn around and give that money away.
Didn't we buy some software as well?
We bought, yeah. We bought everything we were going to need for the next several years out of that money. Plus, plus, we gave our employees, the first thing they told us we could spend it on was employee retention or recruitment. That was the first thing they said you could legally spend it on. A year later, they come up with different things you could actually spend it on. So that's where that gap come in there at. And you'll see that's running out in the next thing, so we'll go back to the regular kind of budgets here. There's our millage rate history from nineteen. You'll see that it's been falling every year. And when we get to it in a minute, but our digest grows every year, so the millage rate comes down to match the growth of the digest. And we look at, compare, it's easy to compare ourselves to compare, but I compared ourselves to the governments around us. And if you look at our general fund budget, you'll see, I mean, Ever County is the only county that's got a lower general fund budget than we do. And when we get over here, we'll get to the important part about how much we spend per person to compare apples to apples. This is the digest. Everybody talks about the digest, and you know, absolutely correct, the digest is different in every county. Some don't make real good sense, but that's the digest across the counties we looked at. If you look at it here, the Department of Audits comes in every year and does a sales ratio calculation based on sales and our tax evaluations. And these two blue lines is just, is the target you got to hit to be correct. And if you'll see, we're right at the bottom of that. And it was just good for the taxpayers, that's its lower side, that's at thirty-eight percent instead of forty percent, thirty-eight point something. But if you'll see, as other governments, and I don't know what's going on in Stevens County, but they, they way down for some reason, and again, that's not my problem, it's theirs. And that's just another graph showing the difference of where they, where everybody should be and where they actually at. There's the millage rates for all the counties. You'll see, ours is at four point five three, seven three. You'll see on here, it's four point zero seven three. We got a half a mil countywide EMS, that's added into this where it's actually accurate. You'll see what our millage rate is compared to everybody else. And here, you'll see what the total millage rate, that's school, canyon all behind, combined for everybody. You'll see even with the school added in, we're still well below everybody around us on millage rate. And here's, here's actually tax money. This is dollar figures. This is not millage rates, this is, this is the actual dollar figure, taking the millage rate and multiplying it by the digest. You'll see the only county that's below us is Ever County, about, what is it, sixty thousand dollars. And here's the comparison where you tell what you're doing. This is a cost per person of the budget, which is in green. For us, it's six hundred and thirteen dollars eleven cents per person according to the census, the latest census. And you'll see where everybody else, that's across there, but the orange one is actual tax dollars per person. You'll see we, we are well below everybody on how much taxes we collect from the public per person in our budget. And we get on that, and then we're going to get to where the other departments are funded from. These accounts are either business accounts like solid waste and the lake parks where we operate a business out of and try to make it at least sustainable if not profitable in the general fund, which is about forty-four percent of the total budget, total revenue, rather. And then you got all these others, these others are restricted accounts, meaning that money can be spent only for specific things, which is allowable by law. The splosh money is governed by the referendum with the voters voted on to spend that money on and the amount they spend that money on. The multi-grant, that's where all grant money goes in for everything countywide, for general government operations, roads, everything like it, that's the multi-grant fund. Nine-one-one fund, that funds nine-one-one only. That's the only thing that comes out of that fund, is expensive for nine-one-one. The confiscated assets, that's when the court awards certain things to the law enforcement. We have to keep the account, but that account strictly controlled by the sheriff to do certain things with. He's bound by the law, he can and can't do with it. But it still shows up in our assets. And again, I'll show just enough again, this is the general fund expenditures. Now, the next slide is going to show you our total budget, which combines all these things If you look at that, everybody thinks we don't spend money on roads. Thirty percent of the total budget, the thirty-six million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand one and sixty-six dollars, thirty percent of it goes to roads and public works. Only the other thing that comes out of that public works is the maintenance shop. Everything else is roads. And you see public safety dropped down to more than thirty-six percent in it. But that's how we fund all of this other stuff, other than tax money. Again, that's what, that's what you see, we spend on just out of general fund. This is, this is your tax money. Your tax money makes up forty-seven percent of this big number of the seventeen million. Forty-seven percent of that's actual tax money, the rest of it comes from other revenue streams. So that being said, anybody got any questions on that? Or want explanation for anything? Now, we'll get to the millage rate.
Can you put this on the website? Can you upload this on the website so people can see it?
Sure.
It's good information, especially that part about roads.
Now, this is what we'll actually have to wait till the eighteenth at lunchtime, tentative to approve. This has got all the millage rates on it. You'll see. If you look at the, at the millage rate that we're set tonight, is the four point oh seven two. And there again, there's the half a mil countywide EMS, and the school system is taking the rollback. Theirs will be set officially Friday morning, the eighteenth at eight-thirty, at nine point five four five mils. So that's where we set the millage rate tonight, ours, these two here. We'll do the final one, or we can do all of them again on the eighteenth, it don't matter. But millage rollback from lost, which is a sales tax, the six point, I'll try to explain some of these numbers sometimes, you're not used to dealing with them. The six point three here, that's the total millage rate. You take the budget, divide it by the digest, you come up with, it takes six point three mils to cover the whole budget in tax money. Then you take the two point two two eight, that's the lost money we get, that's the sales tax money. We have to, well, we don't have to, it's at the disposal of how they use it. But we've always rolled it back in to reduce the millage rate on property tax. So the amount of lost money we get, come in, accounts for two point two two eight mils of revenue. So that's where that rollback's there, which brings you back down to the four point oh seven two. And that's pretty much it. I'll be glad to try to answer anybody's questions that they may have.
Anyone have any questions as far as the budget or? Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, that's a public question. Everything I got is public. There's nothing proprietary at all. And I got all my information off these other county websites, so, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
No other questions? All right, Kim, we get a motion to close the hearing for millage rate?
Second.
Got a motion back to Mr. Brown, second back to Mr. Teasley. We'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of the vote. All right, now we'll move on to, yeah, thank you, Cheryl, that was a lot of good information Adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Get a motion to adopt the budget?
Motion to adopt fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Second.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Bennett, second back to Mr. Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of the vote. Now we'll move on to the adoption of tax year rate twenty-two forty loss rollback rate, which was two point two three eight?
Two point two two eight.
Two eight, okay. All right.
Yeah, I messed it up one year and had to redo it. Two point two two eight.
I give you a motion to approve the lost rollback, two point two two eight mils.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Brown, second back to Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of the vote. All right, now we'll move on to the adoption of county tax year twenty-two forty millage rate, which is four point oh seven?
Two.
Two, and plus the point five of EMS.
Which is actually a point, four point five seven three.
Okay.
We can't do the school yet, we'll have to wait until Friday, so.
Okay. Can we get a motion to adopt millage rate?
You have a motion? Second.
Got a motion back to Mr. Brown, second back to Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. Five of the vote. All right, so now we'll move on to amendment to Chapter forty-six, land development standards. There's a couple of things, what brought about this discussion was we approved a subdivision, and it was on a real narrow road. And so we had some discussion of maybe we need to put in our ordinance that you must have a sixty-foot right-of-way. Well, on, on the county road that you're building the subdivision, but that was just a discussion, that wasn't nothing permanent. We have not, we do not have a moratorium on subdivisions at this point. If it, if it's got a sixty-foot right-of-way, then you're still eligible to apply for a subdivision. One other thing, Ms. Kim, that's been brought to my attention, we used a wrong term in there instead of circumference, it should have been diameter.
For a cul-de-sac.
Uh, diameter. And I think the fire standard is ninety-six feet, I think's what that was.
So while we're modifying, you want to fix that too?
Yeah, we need to fix that also. So that's the basis of why we're having this discussion, so.
So I picked out a couple of things to think about. We did define roadways, and it was looking really good. A public street or road was a sixty-foot right-of-way. A private street or road had to be a sixty-foot right-of-way. County road or street was a road having a minimum of sixty-foot right-of-way. And then we started falling down, or which currently exists on the county road inventory, with or without a stated sixty-foot right-of-way. So we do have plenty of county roads on the county road inventory without the sixty-foot right-of-way. So then I looked for a place to put it, and inside the level-two subdivision, we do have a line that says, there shall be no more than two curb cuts onto an existing county road or state highway. So we could put that there, if that's where y'all were interested in putting it. There's also a second spot on page ten entitled access, and that's where we delineated again, that access to every subdivision shall be provided over a public street or county road, but shall be limited to two curb cuts on said street or county road. So we could put it either place or both places. The other thought that I had that you all needed to think about was that we do have plenty of roads that may have a sixty-foot that turns onto another road that doesn't have a sixty-foot right-of-way, so do you want to get back to a main thoroughfare? Also, in those streets that we had delineated definitions for, we have definitions for rural principal, rural major, a minor collector road. I think if we used those three and left the others out, rural local routes, minor arterial routes, marginal access streets, we could, we could just get, we could just say, using those definitions, it had to get all the way back to a major thoroughfare or a rural major, rural principal, or a minor collector. But then we really don't have a list of what those are.
And there's so many that there is no right-of-ways on, I mean, the highest.
That's what I'm talking about. And in my conversations with Cheryl, Cheryl also mentioned that it's, it's really important that we have a sufficient paved footage there. So even if we didn't have the right-of-way, our concern is safety, these cars passing, do we just have enough pavement? And that makes sense to me, too.
I think you got to incorporate both.
Okay.
My opinion. The whole purpose of this is, we've got subdivisions that have been approved that are out there that, as Commissioner Brown pointed out, and we've talked about, early drive is another one, where there's no right-of-way, there's problems. You know, we get fire trucks in and out, it's just going to be a mess. And this is something that's got to be addressed.
How much pavement, did you say?
I think we've got some roads that got eighteen foot, we've got some. What did we widen out, farm road two, Joy, you remember?
I think it's eighteen.
I think we widened it out, it was sixteen, we widened it out to eighteen. What we're, all we're looking for is where vehicles can meet on the roads. Preferably, a fire truck and a vehicle can meet on that road. I'd say eighteen to twenty foot of pavement.
At least eighteen.
At least eighteen. Twenty foot would be better.
Well, if that's our purpose, then we really don't need the right-of-way. I mean, we got eighteen.
You got to have the right-of-way. The reason, the whole purpose of the right-of-way part is if there's water utilities that have to be run, that developer's responsible for running them if it's within seventy feet of that subdivision. And if the county doesn't have right-of-way, how are they going to run water lines?
Well, we got roads that already have all the utilities, and they don't have the other.
How you going to have utilities if you don't have right-of-ways?
What I'm saying is somebody owns a subdivision that's got a forty-
And that's where, that's where it's going to be, if, if this board doesn't start thinking forward on this stuff, I mean, it's going to cause those problems down the road.
I think it ought to be a case by case, because then you can deal with this where these utilities are, and where they're not.
If, if a developer wants to do a subdivision, and there's not enough right of way there, they can go buy the right of way and do it to the county. That's the way around it.
Well, that's the way around it, but I mean, if, I'm, I'm just saying, there's, there's so many avenues there that.
How, how are you going to be consistent?
That's my point, that's my point. You, you're going to have to be consistent. So if you got forty foot right of way, and all the utilities are there, you say, well, the chapter forty six says we got to have sixty foot. Well, this guy can't build a subdivision there because he only got forty foot right of way, even though the utilities are there. So now, he don't, he's not tearing up any roads, all he's doing is putting a street on it and tying them into the fence.
He doesn't have, he don't have the pavement, that's going to be a problem.
Well, that's, that's what I was getting at, the point is, as soon as I said, it needs to be a case by case, and this way you don't get into a, 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 that could get real sticky.
So Mr. Bennett, you're saying if it already has eighteen feet of pavement and the utilities are already in place, it gets a variance of right of way?
I disagree. How are you going to work on a water line if you don't have a right of way?
Well, you're talking about repairing water lines now.
Yeah.
Earlier, we were talking about installing utilities.
How, how are you going to fix it?
Well, you, well, there's no point fixing if it's not broke, that's the way you got to look at it, you don't fix anything if it's not broke.
Just like what we've had happen. Cheryl, well aware of what's going on with these, this fiber optic stuff out here. We've got to hit water lines multiple times.
Oh, I know, I know.
How you going to fix them, if you don't have a right of way? How you going to fix them?
That's the reason I'm, I'm going back to case by case.
The right of way is important.
A lot of them, they bust, have ruptured, they hadn't been on the county right of way.
Yeah. So how are they fixing them now, if they're not on?
They won't get a right of way. Everyone up there got a right of way.
I, I think we're probably talking about two different right of ways. Just like the water authority goes on a private road, they obtained that right of way, put that line in. Of course, if they're going down a county road, and we got a right of way, they'll fool, they just go down a right of way. But I'm not sure the utilities side of it, that they may have mechanism in place to do their own right of way. I don't know.
Man, I would think that if there is a water line in the ground that busts, you can fix it.
Oh, yeah, everybody has.
Everybody's got the capability to tame their own right of way.
That's the thing. Because they don't have to dig that water line up.
I, I personally had a little issue with the right of way, and I didn't realize it at first till I got to looking at our road list. And there was just so, so much variance up and down, and honestly, not a lot of clarity.
That's what I'm saying, you can start out on a sixty foot right of way and turn and have none, trying to work your way back.
I think we could actually hurt ourselves in these cases that we may, you know, let's just say, there is a, a track of land that we didn't necessarily would like to see a subdivision in, but it may meet the right of way requirements and vice versa. One that could be in an area that meets and fits all criteria, but then you run to a situation where the right of way's not enough, just because there's so much variance there. I mean, I, I didn't think that that was necessarily going to fix our problem per se. Not to say it, not a good point, nothing, you know, not worth looking at, but that's just my findings.
But if you need a case by case, you could examine each and every project.
But you got to have a standard to match it by. Some standard, I mean, whatever standard, you got to have a standard to match it by. If you're not, you're making up a standard as you go.
The other thing you got to think about, too, if this developer's got to run a water line, and, and you don't have substantial right of way, preferably sixty foot, you're going to have fire hydrants right on the side of the road, and you're going to get hit. You got that now in some cases.
It goes back to case by case. You know, it just depends on the area, whether it's on an artery or outerland part of the county, or right on, right on the thoroughfare, you know, it's just, I don't think it's a happy medium anywhere.
Somebody goes and buys a piece of property that's got a road, it's a one lane road, prescriptive ditch to ditch right of way, and they build a subdivision. You point this out last meeting, our meeting for last, they're going to be coming down here and want this board to improve that road. What's going to happen, guys? It's already happened.
There's, there's a lot of, I mean, anything, anything can happen.
But is it right for taxpayers to go pay for that improvement when that developer went in there and bought that land knowing that, and, and built a subdivision, and then it comes back and falls on the backs of taxpayers?
I hear everything you're saying, that's the reason I say it's case by case, because that way you can, it can be brought here and you can look at it. There's too many variables.
Well, I know previously, when we didn't have a sixty foot right of way, we asked the developer to give fifteen foot, ten foot, whatever it makes from the center line of that road to thirty. And then the other side, you know, we had to just leave, I mean, because he didn't own that land. Now, if he owned that land, he would have to, uh.
But that's, that's in the subdivision, the road, he's going to have to do that anyway. He's going to have to give you sixty foot of right of way, if it's going to become a county road.
No, this was a county road, this wasn't subdivision, yeah. But we, we got fifteen foot, ten foot, whatever it was to make up for the thirty.
But that developer can't give you that right of way all the way through.
I think we made them do that on Tom, we made them do that on Tom Cobb.
Tom Cobb route.
That's the very end of Tom Cobb Drive, it was, it wasn't all the way through, it was just.
I mean, we can't be the only county that has varying right of ways.
No, no.
So I mean, what, what are some other findings that, I mean, that you guys have found that, that are working? I mean, I, I haven't, I'll be honest with you, I haven't taken time to look through ordinances. And I haven't got any expert opinion as far as what you do when there's varying right of ways, but what, what verbiage are they using?
What is the law said about prescriptive right of ways?
It's like ditch to ditch.
I thought there, I thought there's somewhere in the law, it's a forty foot, you can have forty foot.
Classic example, red road.
It's where you maintain, which is typically ditch to ditch, that you maintain further out.
What, what were you saying now?
We were talking about whether or not there was a baseline for prescriptive right of way, but there's not.
You're saying ditch to ditch?
It's what the county maintains, which is typically ditch to ditch, once your, your sidearms and your bush tops.
That's what red road is, pretty much ditch to ditch.
Red road, Walker always said, is edge of pavement, edge of pavement.
There's more than that.
You got to have, because of the trees, the pecan trees.
You got to have a ditch, you got to have a way to get the water line.
Well, remember that sewer line down red road, they run it down the west side of the red road, you know where they're at, you go down there every day. But they run it down there, so there must be some right of way there somewhere.
They got, they got right of way from the property owners.
Yeah, because I own property there, and the water line, when it bust, it bust in the yard. But I probably should have let them come on there and fix it.
I mean, water, water authorities and utilities can obtain their own right of ways, I mean, that's.
Yeah, people can give them ease, but it's not.
So if the road, if we had a fifty foot right of way, and then from center line over is twenty five foot, and we're requiring, and we're requiring sixty foot, that would only be a five foot from the developer to make that a six, well, make it on that side of thirty.
Well, just right in front of the subdivision, then you get back into a smaller situation as you get out from in front of the subdivision.
That's where our problem went in.
But if you had a fifty foot right of way, and you say eighteen foot of pavement, well, at least you're thirty two foot, and you're sixteen foot off each side of the road, which is ample space, or even a forty foot actually, you know, is a playground for putting your utilities, but even if you went to ditch. I still think case by case, I mean, even if you went to a fifty, or cut it back to a fifty, or, because forty is actually thinking for them to work on.
I think you got to give your developers a baseline. They spend a whole lot of money way before it ever gets to you, and they need to know what's going to be, likely to be approved and what's not.
You got to have a standard. You can, you can wiggle that standard around, but you got to have a standard where these guys know what they got to try to meet.
Well, we haven't had a subdivision in so long, just, we don't, we don't, we haven't even dealt with that, to be honest. What do we have, one?
We've had one, and again, that was another issue, with that subdivision that we're talking about tonight.
We've had two since first year.
And that was the beauty of coming in right now, while we don't have them piled up and waiting, you know, while we aren't affecting a whole bunch of people who are already in the process.
And again, mandate the process, just what about those? We spend a whole lot of money, come sit down and talk. I don't want you to, because again, just the process is going to take sixty days just to get in front of these guys.
Well, I mentioned in the last meeting that, about somebody that might already have something going on out here, I mean, we come in and throw a fastball, that's it, it's just that simple. You know, shut down everything, there was no moratorium, but you cannot get permanent on some.
I understand that, but, but again, if it goes by the, the intent of the ordinance we got, is these preliminary conversations to take place before we spend money.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but everybody don't watch this meeting, know what's going on.
Well, that's not my fault, the information's out there.
It's a sixty day process, and I think what he was, what, what everybody was saying was, while we don't know of any that are already inside that sixty day process, it's a good time to fix it, and hopefully we're affecting anybody. Because it's going to take them sixty days, and maybe we'll have it.
I've had two people contact me this past, or this week, about a subdivision. And they asked, I said, you know.
A new one?
Yes.
I haven't had anybody contact me at all.
I've had one. So.
These people that contact, I'm sorry.
I was, I would say that if they've already started, and they've done, just like we've done before, I, I think they should be grandfathered in to where we were at when we approved that ordinance as it was. But going forward from this day on, whatever we approved today would need to be enforced. Because we're the one that changed rules. I mean, and like you said, these people spend a lot of money getting these things.
We're trying to protect the taxpayers. We're trying to protect, protect the taxpayers long term.
Well, I, I, you know, we're the judge and the jury when it comes to this chapter forty six.
I do hear, let's just say someone is, and not even in the preliminary beginnings of starting to look at a development, but they have aspirations. I mean, could we even have a, I guess, some type of form before the process to, almost like a, a pre-notification for the notification, like, hey, these guys have aspirations to develop here?
The, the one that went through was done that way. They came in and we looked at everything before they started doing anything.
Yeah, and then they came.
And then we tweaked it as it went along.
He's got a checklist, too, that he operates.
Yeah, I know he's got a checklist, he's talking about the sixty days, I was talking about maybe possibly having something.
And well, I thought one today that's thinking down the road, but.
I mean, he can't, he can't, he can't think down the road.
No, no, I'm talking about this as an individual that's thinking down the road for, for something. And, and again, they decided, I said, right now, I can tell you what this today, but, I mean.
Well, it's like Chairman said, say.
I mean, it's a different situation than what we're talking about, I think that's what we're talking about.
If anybody's got the wheels in motion, that's fine, for a grandfather or something.
How you going to prove it? You got to have some kind of document.
You got to have documentation. Prove your wheels are in motion, you got to have documentation.
And you know, at the last meeting, Cheryl said, he made it very clear, because we asked a question, are there any in process that you're aware of? And you said you were not aware of anybody, nobody even contacted.
I haven't been contacted by anybody since that meeting.
We got to stay consistent here, just like we did the last time, in fair cross board.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused, because, I mean, my, I wasn't at the meeting, I was there, what I could hear. But what I heard from the last meeting was, we weren't putting in a moratorium, am I incorrect?
No, 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 it's just, I mean, again, I think taking a moratorium, but we wouldn't have, we wasn't going to approve any that had a narrow road, is what I understood.
Yeah, less than sixty.
So internal city didn't have any requests for any subdivisions, or anything right now, so we did what we did.
Yeah, that don't make, yeah, I, I get that, that don't mean to what's up my business.
We could fix this in forty five days, in three meetings, if we, if we agree on what we're fixing.
Yeah, but the thing is, I, I mean, you, you four may be good with it, but to me, it just, it seems like we might need to look at this a little more, because a lot of, a lot of gray area, and, I mean, we don't want to be just picking something and then coming right back and doing it again, because that's one thing that I was not for, was us just putting moratoriums in just to put them in. I mean, I, I don't think that's effective governing, I think we need to look at these issues, if they're issues, and seek out expert opinions and make the best decision. But I don't think we should be holding people hostage, I think we did enough of that for a while, we just need to hold off before we do more moratoriums.
No, if anybody's got something that, that don't have this narrow road leading into it, I don't, there's nothing to stop them.
What's the, what's wrong, what's wrong with that? I mean, just chalk it up, I mean, what, the road width.
Sixty feet.
No, we're talking about road width, just no strip.
You don't have anything, I don't have any rules right in place.
What's, what's fallacies in that? What would cause issues for us there, as far as the road width?
Having a minimum of eighteen feet.
Well, I'm saying, okay, we see the issues with the right of way that it is causing. What, if we went with road width versus right of way, what's some issues that would, I mean.
It's just the utilities of the hydrants.
Emergency services and vehicle maintenance.
Yeah, well, fifty feet is ample space. I'm just saying, we don't need.
I disagree, Commissioner. I mean, if that was the case, that would be G dot standards. I mean, you got to look at it, you, you've got multiple utilities that can be put out there. You're going to have phone lines, fiber optic cables, possibly gas, possibly water. You're going to have all that.
I get all that, but a lot of it goes six foot deep, three foot deep, so it's varying about each other, so it's stacked.
It, it depends.
Yeah, I understand. It does depend, but I do know.
It depends on when it's done, when was it done? You get the city of Hartwell out here, they get right on the edge of pavement a lot of times, running gas.
And I see them coach pavement, but that goes right back, let's just say that the road's got a forty foot right of way, but all the utilities are down there. And nobody's going to be digging. Now, and this guy's got land. Why are you going to penalize him?
Well, I think you got to have room to be prepared for the future. You go and put a subdivision.
With all the utilities, then the future's there.
If you go and put them, that's why I'm saying we need to incorporate the, the pavement width, too. You go, well, I'm going to use, I don't want to use a specific example, but we all know what I'm talking about. You go and get some of these little narrow roads, especially some of these, in these farming communities, where somebody goes and buys up a large track of land, and, and they go in there and they start subdividing. If they've got to run a water line, they got to have room for it. You don't want your fire hydrants right on the edge of the pavement, because they're going to get hit. That's why they're offset.
I understand that, but.
Terry, what's the, what's the right of way on Big Bailey Road? I'll, I'll be honest with you.
I have to look.
He paid it.
I mean, it was raining water down there a couple of years ago, so I mean, it's.
It could be two different rights away.
We have several roads.
It's the same thing as mine on the school road. If you don't stick with a sixty foot right of way, won't it, could it affect you about getting money from G dot on paving and stuff like that?
It won't have anything to do with that.
I think we have a lot of things that would prevent it from that, but I don't think the right of ways would.
All right, we're not going to make a decision tonight, but we're, I'm in favor of doing an eighteen foot pavement, and sixty foot right of way. I mean, that's, I mean, does anybody object to that?
I mean, I just, I mean, I, I would like to just visit, I mean, we got a good opportunity to be around some folks that we can talk with this week.
That's right, that's right.
You know, me personally, my schedule's a lot better about being able to take some time and, and devote to reaching out to some experts on this, and.
If somebody's got something in the works, and they meet that, they, they can go ahead and go on with the process.
All right. We'll take no action, but you've got some ideas there, from Kim.
So anybody that's got.
You've got five different ideas, but it's, all right.
So you're looking at eighteen foot of pavement, and you said sixty foot of right of way?
Because that was.
I'm fine with eighteen foot of pavement.
That's kinda consistent with what we've been doing. I mean, when we had, had one developer to give up, I can't remember, fifteen foot or ten foot to have that thirty foot of right of way on that.
My dump probably less than six, so I don't have a problem with say eighteen foot. As you go, you know, I don't believe me, but six inches to stay on the pavement. And I don't have a supersized dump right here.
But even that, I would like for us to see, you know, a list of pros and cons, I mean, and tear it apart, because let's not just make some, a decision just because it feels good or something.
That's your question, fifty foot right of way or will better?
Fifty foot. No, B Bailey.
B Bailey.
That's always back up to the end of the list.
I just know that...
I need to read the road list, mine, mine's way outdated.
Probably not.
Yeah, well, I know there's been ten roads paved since mine's been updated.
Inventory, he's talking about the inventory and the right of way, wasn't it? That wouldn't change with paving.
Do what now?
The right of way wouldn't change.
And they widen anymore?
When they widen the rest, they're gonna service it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was speaking to that.
Has pavement on it?
Only thing I have capable of good is fifty feet, simply because you don't need all that room. And we got so many roads in this county. We got more forties than fifties than we do sixties.
We got more prescription than anything, yeah. Uh, B Bailey's got eighteen foot of, of pavement, uh, part of it's got a fifty foot right of way. It don't, I can't, I'd have to go back and look through all these other things, see which parts of it does.
Well, it's kinda putting you on the spot too, so.
All right.
I just, I honestly ask to see if you just...
I thought they got some more to figure myself on.
Uh, is anybody here like to speak on behalf of, uh, the ordinance? If you would come up?
For clarity on the cul-de-sac, where you're talking about the, the width and we hear ninety, ninety-six, but there's nothing in there specifically about the right of way of the cul-de-sac. So, what is the diff- the distance that you want from the edge of pavement to the right of way of the cul-de-sac? So, that's not, you know, spelled out at...
Twenty feet.
Twenty?
I guess.
It's not in there.
It's not in there, but I, yeah, I mean, that's what I wanted to ask.
That way it would be par- if you figure you got a twenty foot wide road and you got a sixty foot right of way from the edge of the road out, be twenty feet, that's what I would tell them.
Okay, with, with curb and gutter, I mean, twenty feet, that's, I mean, that's a lot for utilities, but I mean, I get it, so.
Are you consistent?
Yeah.
But we don't have anything in the ordinance.
No. That, that's, that's why I'm asking. It used to be in the old, old one, kinda written out, everybody kinda used fifty foot radius, you know, fifty foot right of way. That was kinda the standard with, you know, whatever y'all asked for, but, which would have been less than that, but that, that's fine, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So, we, so if we're gonna go with, say, ninety-six plus, then additional, so it'll be forty-eight plus twenty feet. So, we'll look at sixty-eight foot for the radius to the actual right of way. And then also in the ordinance...
I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I get it, I mean...
That way it's consistent all the way through.
I mean, yeah, I mean, okay, and then...
Can you get what you just said radius?
Yeah, so instead of the diameter of the radius, so it'd be forty-eight feet to the, well, say, back of curb. And then an additional twenty feet is what, uh, Mr. Dorsey suggested, so, which would be, you know, no less than a sixty-eight foot.
From the center of the...
From the center of the cul-de-sac. And then also...
Let me off right at the end with, but I figured you was going from the center.
Yeah, and then also the, the road frontage on, the road frontage, which I would assume would be on the actual right of way. Um, it's listed two different ways, one for two-story homes and one for one-story homes. But in the initial meetings that, you know, I sat in and stuff, we, we talked about different, to me, they, you're talking about the different right of way or diameter widths of the cul-de-sacs. One, one to turn a ladder truck around, one to turn smaller trucks around if there wasn't two-story homes, but to me, that would go for that. So, I was just kinda a little confused, cause ninety feet seems excessive, you know, for, you know, what you need on a right of way. Well, I think we're really concerned on what was needed on the cul-de-sac for two-story homes, so.
It was forty for one story, right?
Is that, and, yeah, I mean, that's what it says. It says the minimum frontage requirement, you know, which would be your road frontage requirement, which was forty feet for one-story homes, and then it kinda said like ninety feet for...
It's supposed to be sixty. Well, sixty feet for the street for the, for the subdivision is sixty foot right of way.
Well, I'm talking about the actual road frontage coming off of a cul-de-sac. Around the, you know, around...
The arc.
Yep, the arc length, that would be the minimum.
Sixty was what our intention was.
Okay, sixty.
It says ninety and...
It said, yeah, it says ninety and forty, it doesn't say sixty anymore, so that's what I was...
Kim, can you make a note of that?
I don't mind getting those.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, I just, I'm in the middle of two of them right now, and so we're trying to come up with a preliminary, something that we can bring to Mr. Parkley, but I need to get it right before we get it to him, so.
So, what, what's in there now? Forty, forty and sixty is what it should say, not forty.
And that's, is that, is that, to me, when I do this all the time, I've never seen a difference in road frontage for one story and two-story homes, ever. I mean, to me, it's like, that's the width of your driveway, can fit between forty feet. I don't understand why we gotta have sixty feet for two-story homes when we're gonna have the same width of driveway.
We're looking at it for firefighting purposes.
Well, that's what we're talking about radius, but I mean...
But it's just on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but we're, we're not talking about the radius, we're talking about the actual frontage on the actual lot.
We were looking at it from firefighting purposes.
Which will...
Specifically.
And that's for road frontage?
Both.
Okay, so...
We did ninety foot on the radius.
For, yeah.
For the cul-de-sac and, you know, based off what we found out, ninety-six is where we're signing up for.
So, you usually see a different, a different length as far as road frontage? Is that what you usually see?
No, no, I don't, but that's, the ordinance reads that there's two different lengths required per lots on the...
Based on the story of the house.
Which to me, I think y'all's intent was for the, the diameters of the cul-de-sacs.
Typically, you're not gonna have a ladder truck on a one-story house.
I mean, yes.
So, you're gonna have multiple pampers and that kinda thing.
Just asking why not have forty-five feet for either, why does it make a difference road frontage wise with the story of the house?
Yeah, we're not talking about the cul-de-sac diameter or anything, it's just the actual frontage required.
Build a bigger diameter around...
That's what you're, is that what you're asking, if that's why they're not the same or...
Yeah, why are they, why do they differ, especially when it reads forty to ninety feet for road frontage, when everybody's still gonna have a ten to twelve foot wide driveway?
What other ordinance does say, what other ordinance does say around the cul-de-sac?
I mean, they differ, I mean, huge.
Forty-five?
And I mean, typically, you're looking at twenty, I mean, not say twenty, usually thirty is more, I know, which is what it used to be, is like thirty's more of a typical, but also, I mean, it depends on so many different things, so. I mean, some of them don't require any, you can have private drives come off of it that are easements. So many communities allow that, now, but it's not allowed here, but that would be zero frontage, they're just having an easement, so. But I, I just, I mean, while we're doing it, I mean, I'd just like to have...
From your perspective, cause I know, I remember that now, uh, the, the two-story, one-story fire, I mean...
Yeah, and I was in...
Be the same width.
I mean, we're talking about getting from the cul-de-sac to the house.
We're, we're not going down the driveway more likely.
We're not gonna play on the driveway.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get it.
It'll be irrelevant.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
What if there's trees?
I mean, that's what I was saying, there's trees, mailboxes, power boxes, everything else.
We're gonna be on the cul-de-sac, we're not gonna get off that cul-de-sac.
Okay, well, you, that's, if you're not getting off the cul-de-sac, then why do we need different radius, I mean, different lots?
Because if we, if the house beside it's on fire and you've got, it's like thirty foot of road frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Or thirty, forty, I'm not in forty. You could very easily have those people blocked in, or they couldn't get out on their driveway, whatever the case may be. That's why we wanted more room.
Okay. So, what is the number then?
The ordinance says forty-nine.
It says forty for one-story homes.
That's what our intentions were.
But, I mean, what's the length difference between a regular fire truck and a ladder truck? I mean, we're not, you know, is it, is it fifty foot difference? Because that's what you're asking for.
There's a big difference. You probably looking at...
I remember it, it'll be forty and sixty.
That's what it was. Okay. Forty and sixty. Okay. We're still in front of them, so we got some time.
All right.
So, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak on? Okay, if not, we'll move on to, uh, uh, new business defects, board, board appointments.
And I think I may have misread it, I think we actually got four of them instead of three. We got, uh, two unexpired terms and two full terms. We had four applications, uh, one didn't meet the basic qualifications that's set by the state. So, my suggestion would be to appoint the two full terms in one of the part terms.
Partial terms?
Partial terms. You got two full, they'll expire in twenty, twenty-nine, and you got two unexpired terms that will expire in, uh, June of twenty-six, next year. So, if, if you wanna fill the full terms while you got them, I would suggest that and then we'll leave one unexpired term open. At least they'll have a quorum now, they ain't been able to have a quorum.
All these advocates, are all of them currently serving? Are all of them currently serving?
No, no, all these are new and all the applications you got is for new ones.
None, none of them are serving at the time.
No, but they do meet the qualifications set by the state, they gotta have to, to serve on that board. And I, and I put the qualifications in, in your packet under there with, with the all.
Yep, it's in there.
And we got Vivian Davis, uh, Jane Little and Crystal Teasley. And I say all three meet, meet the qualifications. And you got, so you got two term, two five-year terms open, and you got two terms that will